Oh, okay. I will bring up my clock.
Well, now that Mr. Roberson is back, we'll go ahead and get started. Before we do, I'd like to invite you all to stand with the council. And Bonda McFadden is hiding somewhere, and she's going to give us our invocation. Then please remain standing for the flag sleeve. Ms. McFadden, I know you're here. She was here a minute ago.
There she is.
All right, there you go. All right, all right. Thank you.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Kelso. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting. Looks like everybody's here, so if there's no objection, we'll waive the roll call. Council, in your packet were minutes from April 21. What would you like to do with those?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second to approve the minutes from April 21. Discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? I hear no ayes. Uh, no, sorry. No opposition. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. All right, I have a couple proclamations, three actually, that I'd like to read. First is National Salvation Army Week. That is May 11 through 17 this month here. Whereas since 1922, the Salvation Army's only business throughout the communities of Calles County, as everywhere, is human business undertaken with joy for the family of humankind to the great glory of God. And whereas since the first pronouncement by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1954, the Salvation Army has celebrated National Salvation Army Week with various activities and events around the country. And whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all the residents of our county with neither salvation nor any other condition prerequisite, not expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community support. And whereas nearly 30 million Americans receive assistance from the Salvation Army each year through a broad array of social services that range from providing food for the hungry, relief for disaster victims, assistance for the disabled, outreach to the elderly and ill, clothing and shelter to the homeless, and opportunities for underprivileged children. Now therefore, I, David Futter, Mayor of the City of Kelso, to hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2015, as National Salvation Army Week in the City of Kelso. So I've signed that proclamation, and who's here for that? Somebody from Salvation Army? Can't see so well tonight. There's a few more bodies than normal. Nobody? All right. Well, we'll get it to them later. Second, National Transportation Week, May 10 through 16. Whereas Kelso has a long history as a transportation provider since 1889. And whereas Kelso owns 74 miles of streets, alleys, and operates, streets and alleys, and operates for it and maintains four bridges. And whereas transportation services provided in Kelso are an integral part of the everyday lives of its citizens, promoting clean, healthy neighborhoods and establishing vibrant communities. And whereas the city's regional transportation infrastructure is essential in sustaining an economy which greatly impacts our livability, business, and commerce. And whereas the importance and value of our nation's transportation system and those components built and maintained by Kelso, including our city streets, bike and pedestrian facilities, culverts, rights-of-way, alleys and bridges. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of transportation projects and services enjoyed by citizens of Kelso are dependent upon the skills of the qualified and dedicated public works employees. And whereas the contributions of the public works employees include regional and local planning and coordination with other jurisdictions, 24-hour service from road and bridge maintenance staff, road and bridge engineers designing and constructing up-to-date facilities, traffic and sign staff installing and maintaining pavement markings and traffic signage, surveyors providing the necessary surveys for design and construction of road projects, including topographic and right-of-way surveys and construction staking, right-of-way specialists ensuring safe and usable land for the transportation system, environmental compliance staff overseeing the city's compliance with local, state, and federal water quality rules, and administrative and financial support professionals that keep our offices running smoothly. Now therefore, I, David Futter, Mayor of the City of Kelso, to hereby proclaim May 10 through 16, 2015, as National Transportation Week in the City of Kelso. Autograph that. Who's here for that? All right, there we go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Like to say a few words? No, we're good. Thank you. That is an acceptable answer to the question. Thanks for what you got to doing out there for us. All right. These guys are a little easier to identify. Police Week, May 10 through 16, coming right up here. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Kelso Police Department. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Kelso Police Department, Officer Francis Conan, in to watch March 27, 1948. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 116 officers killed in 2014 and 159 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 27th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2015. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 10 through 16. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Kelso formally designates May 10 through 16, 2015, as Police Week in the City of Kelso, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Guys? Sir? Want to say something?
Of course.
Don't give a chaplain an open mic. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, I have the privilege of working with Kelso Police Department on a regular basis. I'm here to inform you of the quality of personnel that you have in your city. They're stellar. And I see a different side. I see the compassion that they deal to the citizens of this, the respect that they hand out to the citizens. I see them sacrificing from their personal selves emotionally, sometimes monetarily. You know, we do the shop with the cop. We do the every 15 minutes program. We watch our officers invest themselves in the community, on their own time, in many cases, and they're on their own dime. They are an integral part of this community. And you are privileged, as a citizenry and as a council, to have these men and women working and supporting this city government. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present this to Chief Hamilton.
Chief, on behalf of the citizens of Kelso and the city council, this is in recognition of your fine service to this community. Any questions?
All right. Still up.
Mr. Mayor, council, and citizens, tonight brings me great honor to swear in the two newest members of the Kelso Police Department. Roy, could you step up? John? Roy, you're up.
I, Roy Slaven, declare myself. I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Kelso. And the rules and regulations of Kelso Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Kelso Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officers.
The duties of police officers.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
And therefore, I, John Dolke, declare myself.
I, John Dolke, declare myself.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Kelso.
Laws and ordinances of the City of Kelso.
And the rules and regulations of Kelso Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Kelso Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officers.
The duties of police officers.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
So in the olden days, there would be a badge-pinning ceremony, but since we went to sewed-on badges, I've got a badge for each one of these officers to issue to them. Our normal daily uniform now has the cloth badge. Our specialty uniforms have their actual hard badges, so they'll each be issued one of those. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Officer Roy Slaven and Officer John Dolke.
Congratulations, guys.
Your Honor, just a short presentation. This is National Police Week, as you did cover in the presentation. Each week during this time, communities come together like ours in remembrance of the police officers who have lost their lives. You went over all the stats as to how many there were. President Kennedy put this proclamation in law in 1962, so it has been around for a while. But still, after that time, we are here to remember and honor those officers during the passage of Police Week. There are a number of events that are listed on the website for the National Peace Officer Memorial, which is online, which happened in Washington. Usually over 30,000 officers and family members will trek back to remember one of their loved ones and help celebrate. One of those that you mentioned, or we do know that right now, actually, the slide's been changed since this morning when I put it together. The number to date of the law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty is 40 right now as we speak. Last year, we had 127, and was one of the closest years that we had. We have been participating in a program called Below 100. The initiative is to get that officer count below 100 deaths. It has not been below 100 since 1943, so it's been there for a long period of time. You spoke of Officer Francis Conan, who was the only officer in Calles County who's been killed in the line of duty. He was a Kelso police officer responding to a call about 11:00 PM in the Old Wesley Hotel in West Kelso. This was on March 27, 1948. He went to a family disturbance, which is one of the calls that are most dangerous for officers. As his backup went up the stairs, they heard shots fired. They later found that the officer had been in a struggle with the suspect, that the suspect had taken the officer's revolver and shot him, but the officer had affected the arrest and cuffed him prior to passing away. The individual was found guilty at that time, what would be considered now to be murder in the second degree. He was placed in the penitentiary, got out several years ago, and then died of natural causes. At that point in time, Officer Conan was 33 years old, the suspect was 26. Officer Conan left behind a wife and a one-year-old child. In 1988, Officer Conan was postulately awarded the Washington State Medal of Honor, and his name is inscribed on that memorial, and this is a copy of it, which is in Olympia. His name is also inscribed on the walls at the National Law Enforcement Memorial, which is in Washington, DC. This is approximately 304-foot-long curb, as you see on here, wall that has names inscribed. You can see how many names are inscribed on there. When you get close up, you can see our Officer Francis Conan, who is placed on the wall, just much like the memorial wall at the Vietnam Wall. People do etch and visit this and pay respects and remember their loved ones. This is an etching from the law enforcement officer wall there. At the end of these, another lion fills out the memorial. It's not how these officers died that made them heroes, it's how they lived. And that's a, it's a little bit hard to read the inscription there. So all of these things, we normally have in the front lobby area of Kelso Police. We do have some on loan currently to the exhibit over at the museum, so that people can remember. You know, remembering that this is a tough job, I just wanted to let you know about the great quality of people that we have. Right now, I'm proud to say we have 26 commissioned officers. You've been hearing 24 for a while, and you'll see up there that the two officers that were sworn in tonight appear on there. These are the men and women, some of which are here tonight, who work for the Kelso Police Department. I am very blessed by the people that I have, and I think it's a testament to our department that so many have stayed for so long, and we're now in a little bit of a retirement issue. When they start going, it will be a little bit hard to get them all taken care of and keep everything staffed up. The other person I'd like to recognize is our reserve unit. These officers who are coordinated by Sergeant Doug Lane, one of the officers that we've had here for a number of, Sergeants we've had here for a number of years, does an excellent job with them. They did approximately 900 hours worth of service to the citizens of Kelso last year and helped us out. We also have two DOC officers. For all intensive purposes, they're police officers. They're armed, they carry guns, they work out of this building, they're here Monday through Friday, and those two are a great help to us, Brad Phillip and Chris Napolitano. The chaplains, that, of course, Mario, who was here before, have done a great job in helping our officers, not only our officers, but people at crime scenes, people at death scenes. They do a great work for us, and we need to thank them. The lower Columbia Peace Police Science Class, I mean, it's all about what's in our youth. These are the students that are in the criminal justice program, and we really need to make sure that we remember them and let them know that they are cared for. This is a picture of the class recently at the Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission. So in closing, Officer Conan is gone, but his sacrifice to the Kelso community has not been forgotten. We thank you for the time that you do this. We thank you for the community support. We thank everyone for coming tonight, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, council, we have no consent items tonight, so we'll move on to citizen business. If you'd care to address the council tonight, this is your opportunity. Do you want to do one thing first, Sophie?
Yes.
Sorry. We'll be right back.
I just wanted to recognize the Council Downtown Revitalization Association for their support of our Allen Street Bridge landscaping project, and we did already receive the donation of $1,000 from the KDRA, and we appreciate that, along with the support from the Rotary and the South Kelso Neighborhood Association, Kelso School District. And I forgot to mention Council Starbucks, who provided us coffee on both days of the event, so I want to make sure to get a plug in for them, so. But I do appreciate the commitment that KDRA has to help and improve the appearance and the vitality of our downtown. And Mike, do you have any words you wanted to say?
Sure, since I've got a microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you. We really do enjoy working with the city. You guys are a great partnership. It's, we look forward to future projects of this caliber and hopefully bigger, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys taking the lead on that. All right, so now we'll get back to citizen business. Just to bring you up to speed on what we're doing here, you, please address your comments to the council. You've got three minutes. Mr. Myers, the deputy mayor, will be in charge of keeping that time going, so I can listen to you better. If, you know, it looks like we have a lot of folks here tonight talk about the shelter. If you feel like somebody's already said what you want to say, just say, hey, I agree with Bob, or whatever their name is. You know, if you have new information to add for us, then great, we'd love to hear from you. We thank you all for being here tonight and just gathering up the cojones to take the mic. I know it's not easy for a lot of people. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started here. I just have kind of a random order, I think. Ms. Teagan, Karen Teagan? I hope I'm saying this close to right.
She wanted me to come up with her, so.
Oh, okay. You had to show her the right hand.
My name is Chris Bornston. I live at 119 North Maple Street in Kelso. And I'm going to go ahead and just read a quick statement I gave you guys, some articles from the Daily News, and I'll go ahead and read this, and then let her say what she has to say and anything else. So let me start. Couple of weeks ago, a citizens group of about 25 citizens formed, and they all expressed that they have concerns with the love-overwhelming shelter. So as citizens in Calles County, we feel we have a responsibility to keep people of our community safe and feel that love-overwhelming, a failed and unsafe social experiment, considered an urban rest stop located at 304 Calles Way and the surrounding area, has become an unsafe for our community, the people seeking help inside the shelter, and the staff. We ask that the city council initiate a conversation with the Calles County Commissioners to immediately put in place barriers at love-overwhelming to help better protect the community, or put an end to this failed social experiment. So just so you know, I went up to try to talk to the county commissioners yesterday morning, and on my way into the building, right there in the bushes, I found a big bag of drug paraphernalia. I mean, it was packed full of needles, I don't know what else it is. Took it upstairs, and I turned it in, and the police came up and picked it up. But this is, my personal opinion is, this is becoming a danger for the community, and it's becoming a danger for the people that are coming and doing business around the county building. And this is just not a good place for us to have this type of a shelter. And I want to thank Gary Archer for being one of the only people on the council that voted no when it came to rezoning this. So he was right. And there's another lady that is in here that's been in here talking a lot to you guys about, and you guys should have listened to her because she was right as well, so thank you.
First of all, I want to clarify something. Nobody rezoned anything. Nobody, nobody, we never zoned this for disuse. This is a continuation of a use that was already there, that we see differently, I'm sure, the use that's happening now versus the use that was there. But we never did vote to rezone. We never did vote to allow this. This is something that, that when you have a property being used a certain way, somebody else wants to come in and use it the same way, you can't do anything about that. And we can put any kind of number of rules in place now, but it's existing use and it's existing business, they'd be allowed to continue.
Yeah, I could add a little bit to that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, thank you.
You know, we did have a moratorium in place while we had addressed some needed changes to the definition of urban rest stop, low-barrier shelter, transitional housing. And during that moratorium, we did receive the application for the love-overwhelming organization to continue the prior use of that shelter with just a slightly different population. We went through a rather lengthy and significant administrative review, which is the only review where you really could apply. And both our legal counsel, our insurance authority counsel, and our planning consultant, all three basically said we were in a position where we had to, we had to acknowledge it as a continuing use. And so we really had no choice to approve or disapprove. It was simply, simply that.
So regardless of how different it may seem to us looking at it, they said legally we had no authority to look at it as a different use.
That's exactly right, yeah.
And just one clarification, Mr. Mayor. From the zoning standpoint, we did make changes to the definitions and what could be allowed or what couldn't be allowed. So an emergency shelter is allowed in this particular area, but it would have to go through a conditional use permit process.
But that's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the establishment of this facility.
That is correct. With this facility, that came in before those new regulations were put into effect.
Thank you. It's a jumbled legal mess, I tell you. It's hard to follow some of it, and the gut is, hey, this is bugging me, and I don't feel like what's going on is what we should have. There's got to be a way, but there's not always. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Karen Tiggen.
Oh, Tiggen, I'm sorry for saying it wrong.
That's okay. There isn't a shelter of this caliber like this, no barrier between here and Olympia. So what you're getting here in Kelso, I'm from Casaroc, but it does affect me.
I'm sorry, if you'll excuse me, could you give us your address for the record, please?
We're at 8530 Barnes Drive in Casaroc.
Thank you.
I lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
There isn't anything between here and Olympia, or Portland, Olympia. So what you're getting here in Kelso, you're getting all the drop-off drug people, you're getting the sex offenders, you're getting everything from Portland into that shelter. They're just dropping off. They drop their drugs off, they use their just dropping off. They drop their drugs off, they use their drugs in the background, they use their drugs down at the capniobis down there, there's needles. They allow kids in there. Now, I've been a foster parent for many years, and I'll tell you, we have never once allowed a child with a sex offender, and that's being done, and it's being okayed by the city. I don't find that...
It's not being okayed by the city. We're not...
Right here on this paper, Chuck, the owner of, the one that manages it, says, "Who will be in there? Chronically homeless, multiple needs, meaning mental illness, reoccurring disorders of mental illness and substance abuse, high consumers of public services, unaccompanied youth between 18 and 24, people exiting care, systems of care such as jail, prison, psychiatric hospitals, hospital, and foster care, mentally ill, physically disabled, addicted to drugs or alcohol, ex-offenders, HIV and AIDS." Do you realize that these kids are being exposed daily to people that can have HIV, they could have hepatitis, anything like that? And they're innocent kids. We have two daycares close by, we have two churches nearby that have kids that come and go, and elderly people. There's also the domestic grounds that goes on there, there have been, how many?
The police, we did a public records request from January 1st of this year through March 26th of this year, and there were 99 phone calls, you know, police calls made, and there were 68 police reports filed. I personally went over 33 of the reports, and a rough estimate, probably around 20 of those 33 calls were calls for, you know, that had to do with violence, domestic violence, assault, threats of assault, disorderly conduct, you know, out in the area, you know, threatening people to kick them, to harm them, you know, throwing, you know, I mean, there's just all kinds of things that are going on. And, you know, talking to people at the county building, they're flushing drug paraphernalia down the toilets, causing backups. It's just, it's not a healthy environment. I mean, we had a judge that threw out a guy that tried to kidnap two children and placed him into a shelter with children. I mean, you know, it's just not, this isn't a good thing for right there at our county building. You know, to me, it also, you know, it doesn't make any sense to house children and women with people that are sex offenders, drug addicts that are, that are not trying to get better, that are just, you know...
That's three minutes.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers is doing a good job there. Thank you for sharing. We don't disagree with that. I just wanted to be clear that it was not that, we go out and approve this every day. It's not like we have a continuing regulatory authority over this. Okay, let's go on to Ms. Grigsby. Welcome back.
Good evening. Name and address, please, for the record? Adina Grigsby, 1109 South Third Avenue.
Thank you.
So this was the Women's Shelter's calls in 2014 in the first three months, and this was love-overwomings in the first three months, which they weren't even open the first month except for like 10 hours a week. So, it's a big difference, and Melissa Taylor said, "It's going to be the same as the Women's Shelter. It's not going to have any different impacts than the Women's Shelter." I've seen people using needles up there on the county steps. There's people constantly using needles where the old Kelso Library is, which is city property, which, I mean, I guess I'd rather have it done there than in somebody's backyard or at the daycare or wherever, but it's still, it's not good. And they have attracted these people to our community, and a lot of them are not from here. A lot of them are from all over Montana, whatever. It's, it's not good, and I want to know how they're running an urban rest stop when their, when their permit is for an emergency shelter. I thought that they weren't supposed to be running an urban rest stop out of that.
I don't have the answer to that.
Because they have...
What the exact differences are between those two, and how, what they're doing may or may not apply the definition, may or may not. Anything?
As we understand it, they're offering the same set of services that were offered by the domestic violence shelter prior to. So some day services are available.
Gotcha. Thank you. And that's where we, that's where we come to...
I'm just wondering, because they said when they reviewed the things, that they were not running an urban rest stop, from Michael Kardas, that it was not an urban rest stop, but they're being funded as that. So, I mean, it's a...
I think there are multiple programs going on in there, and I think some of those are the...
Well, how are, how are they running all of those, though, under the Women's Shelter designation?
Right, right. I see what you're saying. And the question would be, are these things that they're doing, are they different than what the Women's Shelter was doing in terms of letting people come in and stay there? And, you know, what's the difference between day use or overnight? And, you know, was the Women's Shelter only allowing overnight and not any day use? I don't think so. I think that, I think there's, well, I don't, it doesn't matter what I think. Our legal, three sets of legal counsel we've taken have said, "There's not enough difference to make a, to make any change there."
We did make, sorry, Mr. Mayor, we did make inquiry to Emergency Support Shelter, and as well, we had information requests to love-overwhelming to see what their daily services, what services were being provided, and so we could compare that to the services that had been provided before. And again, if we, you know, we're dealing with a continued use and not a new use that has specific conditions from a conditional use permit, that's, that's the difference that we have here.
Gotcha. Yeah.
But, so the people, though, that are being kicked out, like Daryl Bowen, who, in the first few days they were open, tried to shove his fingers up a woman's vagina, which I know the Daily News forgot to report that one, but he's now, was several weeks later wandering around North Kelso drunk. So, it's pretty great. I mean...
But I mean, what would he be doing if they didn't exist? Would he still be wandering somewhere? I mean, that was always the hard part for us to figure out. You know, it doesn't seem to always create people. I know you guys have mentioned, it does seem to attract from outside of the area, but a lot of times, these people are already in the community and...
Some of them are.
Yeah.
But most of them were not in our town.
Yeah.
And I think, hopefully, everyone agrees with that because that's how it was. I mean, we didn't have all these issues before this went in.
Not there.
And, right, and I don't agree that there was nothing that you could have done, because you gave the Emergency Support Shelter, what, $20,000 or $30,000? You agreed to move it over there. I would have told them, "You can't have it unless you don't run to love-overwhelming," because that was pretty...
We helped them because they need, they're a good, they're an organization that needed help.
I agree that they are.
We can't hold them hostage in an existing facility, say, "You're banned from moving." We could, we could not give them the money, they still are gone, and they just would have had less money to serve the people that they try and help.
Right, but they made money off of it, and they're...
That, you know, I mean, that's a valid organization that you guys could be talking to, too. I mean, they're still the landlords there. And, you know, they make the decision to continue leasing there.
Right, and you made the decision to support them.
Okay. In the bigger picture, do you feel like that's an organization that should not be supported?
No, I think that they should be supported, but I don't think that they should be supporting an organization that is creating more victims. I mean, they're getting money off of that, too. I mean, it's like a never-ending cycle that they've helped create, and I don't agree with it.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Don Screen, Kelso Housing Authority. How you doing? Welcome. Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Don Screen, and I live at 150 Lenora Lane in Kelso. I just have a brief statement here. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Don Screen. I'm the maintenance coordinator for the Kelso Housing Authority, which owns the Columbia and Chinook apartment buildings in the 200 block of North Pacific Avenue. We are concerned about an increase in vandalism since the opening of the homeless shelter. Problems that we have recently experienced include a welcome mat stolen and flower pots tipped over, people urinating on the exterior doors of our buildings, someone defecating near the front door of the Children's Justice and Advocacy Center, a no-smoking sign on the front of the Chinook Building was set on fire. This damaged the siding and required repainting of the area. A resident of the homeless shelter obtained keys from one of our tenants and was accessing our building. There were concerns of drug activity and a complaint of a loud profanity-laced disturbance. These buildings are secured for the protection of our tenants. Drug paraphernalia have been found on the exterior of our properties, and tenants and staff have witnessed drug activity in the back parking lot. On behalf of the Kelso Housing Authority staff, we'd like to thank you for hearing our concerns tonight.
Thanks so much, Mr. Screen. Mr. McCarthy, there you go. Welcome down here. You can give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dennis McCarthy. I live at 2420 South Silver Lake Road in Kelso, Casaroc. I grew up in the Longview-Kelso area. When I get up and leave for work at 5:00 in the morning, I drive down this road every day, and it's amazing, the toothless, 10-speed, riding, backpack-wearing people that are out at 4:00 in the morning doing absolutely zero for the community. Housing these people is preposterous, as far as I'm concerned. Out of the 99 calls and the 61 reports, I'd like to know how many actual arrests were made. I don't know how you get that information, but all of the stuff that they're doing is already against the law, and I realize that, I don't blame the Kelso Police, but somebody up above the Kelso Police is keeping these people from arresting these people for these crimes.
I'm not sure that that's the case.
They are minimized, these kind of crimes are minimized in the, must be the jail system, or maybe it's the district attorney's office at that level. We have some personal experience with our own children that have run amok, that have broken the law. We've tried to get them into the criminal justice system because youth at risk only has so much jurisdiction. And based upon what we've been told by several Calitz County Sheriff's Office deputies, is that you have to commit a pretty serious crime to get arrested anymore. Domestic violence won't do it, you know, stealing won't do it. I'm pretty sure that using drugs in public and getting caught with drug paraphernalia doesn't get the job done either, because I haven't heard of an overwhelming number of arrests coming from that place, even though there seems to be quite a few calls.
Actually, I believe that domestic violence is a mandatory arrest.
What's that?
Domestic violence is a mandatory arrest. If they go to a scene and there's domestic violence occurring, somebody has to go be arrested. So I'm not sure that I'm with you on all those points, but...
I'm not asking you to be with me. I want to know how many arrests were made up there.
Okay. I know that that information's available. It sounded like Mr. Bornstein probably has a pretty good tally of that information, but... So 68, you think 68 reports seem out of 99? Okay. Chief?
I actually think it was 62, if I remember correctly.
62 arrests or reports?
I was, I was never, well, no, 62 reports. I was never asked how many specific ones were arrests. But let me clarify one thing for you. Kelso does not, Kelso arrests more than most communities do. We do not take away, now, paraphernalia is a crime that through the courts is not really used that much anymore. It takes a lot to get that, but using drugs, assaults, thefts, you will go to jail in Kelso more than you will any other jurisdiction.
Well, the paraphernalia almost seems to be more of a danger than it is after the fact than it is during the fact. I mean, paraphernalia that's left behind for kids to find, for people to have to clean up and possibly poke themselves with it, they could have been using, been used by somebody that has HIV or hepatitis or so on and so forth. None of this can be looked upon lightly, and it's all against the law.
True.
So, you know, to hear 99 calls being made and 61 or 62 reports being made, I haven't heard anybody say that there was any arrests made.
So nobody's, nobody's gotten that information tonight. It doesn't sound like for absolute numbers of arrests. But yeah, I, like the chief, would assure you, it is not zero.
I just know how frustrating it was for us to, we have a son that's mentally ill. He has Asperger's and several other behavioral issues. We needed help from the police, and it wasn't the Kelso Police, granted, but we were basically told that their hands were tied. They couldn't make any arrests under, it had to be a pretty serious crime, basically in, you know, in so many words, they said that he's going to have to seriously hurt somebody before they would actually come and arrest him.
And you're trying to get him help and get him, keep him from hurting somebody.
I realize there's not a money, a lot of money in arresting crackheads that can't pay their fines, and we're going to just wind up, you know, housing them and so on and so forth. But we still need to get them off of the streets or run them out of town. This is way too nice of a place with too many classy people to have that kind of stuff in our town.
Completely agree. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Lori Shelby?
I'm Lori Shelby, and I live at 2420 South Silver Lake Road, Casaroc. So, the biggest concern I have with the love-overwhelming is, first, I grew up here, and I grew up in the Highlands, and today, the Highlands is the worst place you could live. And so I just kind of feel like today, when you go through Kelso, there are many, we've videotaped many people sitting out on the city steps higher than a kite, yelling and screaming at citizens, chasing after citizens. We have pictures of people actually using drugs on the facility property, on the city steps, and, you know, the sad part of it is, is that I have teenagers, and so me as a mom, I'm trying to tell my teenagers, "Let's not use drugs." But I also want to tell my kids that we need to serve our community and do what's right, and serve dinners and breakfasts and things like that to the homeless. I would never want my children to ever be around something like that. That's not something I want my children to see. I'm teaching my kids that I don't want them to look, to pick up drug paraphernalia. I don't want my kids to see drugs laying around. But if my children were to need help, and they were in a situation where they needed somewhere like a homeless shelter, why would I want them to go there? There are registered sex offenders there. There's children there. That's our future. Those children are our future. There's women there that have actually been battered. I'm not saying that there isn't men there that have, have been battered, but there's women there that are with children. There was a time where I had to go there. I needed help for something, not because I was a battered woman, but I needed help for something. They were so kind. They were so sweet. Now, I wouldn't even walk next to that building. It's scary. Why are we allowing these people to walk around our community? These people inside there are obviously mentally ill. They've made bad choices. So now we have them all housed together? So who's to say that somebody's not going to go in there and do some heinous crime to those poor children, or to the women, or to the people that actually want the help or need the help? We, we want to have ALAN on, and we want to have NA, and we want to have CA, and all AA, and all these things, but it's all great and dandy, but we're housing all of these crazy people in one place, and not only is that a danger, but the community around it is a danger. There's an Oxford House that's across the street from that facility. Those people are trying to get clean. So they get to step outside their door to watch people getting high? How's that working out? There's people that are, you know, children, daycares. We have family that drop their kids off, and they have to skip over the needles on the ground. How fair is that? This is our community, and this is our future, and we want to build our future, and we want to build our community, but we can't do that with that kind of stuff around here. Why not take them out to the industrial area and let them live in the old Reynolds Building, and they can scrap metal all they want and poke around all they want?
I think there's some folks at Millennium Bulk that might have a little bit of a challenge with that.
Well, I'm sure, but you know what? They're far away from the community. There isn't a daycare there. There isn't churches there. There isn't those kinds of things there. People aren't in danger.
Yeah.
Today, they're in danger.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Thank you for what you got there. Thank you, thank you. All right, Curtis Hart. Welcome back, sir. Welcome back, sir.
I live at 115 Williams Avenue, and thank you for letting us speak today. What we're actually hoping to accomplish is for the City Council to draft a letter to the county commissioner, um, county commission to look at the contract for this funding, because it says in the contract that they can cancel the contract at any time for convenience. And I believe that they left themselves that out in case something like this happens. And I know you guys say your hands are tied, but, I mean, I just heard you make like three proclamations. You can make a proclamation that you would wish the county to take care of this problem. If they're the ones that are taking the funding, I mean, this, this funding should be going to the community house, where it was taken away from. The director of Love Overwhelming is telling people that they're not allowing sex offenders in there. He actually sent me a message saying that they're not allowing sex offenders in there, and he wishes that I wouldn't tell people that they were. But the fact is that they're not asking people for any ID when they go in there. And I know this because I went in there. I dressed up like a homeless person, got a scowl on my face, and went in. I told the person, I didn't feel like giving them a name. They let me in. My buddy gave a fake name. He wrote his name down on the list, and when he looked at the list, he saw, what's his name? Quest Cortell's name. He was signed in. He's a registered sex offender. I saw Quest exiting the building, so I know that there's sex offenders in there. And the way he's going around telling everybody that they're not, because there's children in there, it would make you seem that the director would know what he's talking about. But I, as a stranger, shouldn't be going into his building and telling him who's in his building, when he, especially when he's telling everybody so vehemently that there's not those type of people in there. And the fact that he has children in there, I mean, just, this guy should be elevated because he's walking around those daycares, really. I'm, I'm pretty sure they're not supposed to go within so many feet of a daycare, and they're, they're in there. I was assaulted by a lady after I took a picture of her outside the, uh, the county administration building. She was all knotted out on heroin. She told me that she was, had been staying at Love Overwhelming, and then after I got my phone in my pocket, she flipped out and chased me out in my car. I drove out, and she had ran out in front of Love Overwhelming, met me out on Calhoun Way, and attempted to, I think she wanted me to stop. I'm not really sure. I didn't. My mom has a story about a, uh, her experience.
Thank you.
At Love Overwhelming.
All right.
I'm Valerie Hart, Curtis's mom. I live at 202 North 6th. I'm also a member of Alcoholics Anonymous, and we were given permission to take a meeting in there. And we, they gave us the permission, sounded like they were excited about it. We didn't just call it an AA meeting, we called it an open meeting for recovery, which included NA and stuff, you know, we made sure they knew that. And not only did they nod and make any kind of announcement to the people that were in there, they put it as in the basement, and they put a sign on the door that said, "Do not enter." So it was always the four AA members, and then each week, one person from upstairs would come. And the second week I was there, the way you, well, the first week I parked over, and then the next time I came, they put up an orange fence, so I had to go park in the other parking lot, and you have to back in, and I'm backing in, turn around to look to see if there's a, you know, to see, make sure I wasn't going to hit the car next to me. And this is a little, I won't say it because there's kids in here. They were in the act. There was a woman in the backseat, a man in the front, and they were doing things that children should not see. And personally, I didn't want to see it either. And he just sat up and looked at me, and turned around and started at it again. You know, and I went in, and I said, "Hey, there's people openly having sex out in your parking lot." And they didn't do anything about it. Nothing. Um, and a friend of mine, because I work in recovery, I, I have the opportunity to work with women, you know, that are, that are trying to clean up their act, and their kids also, and this lady took her son there because he couldn't stay with her, because she's staying at the women's shelter. And, um, they told him, they told him and her, "We prefer it if you don't use drugs. If you have drugs with you, if you would give them to us, we'll lock them in our safe, and then we'll return them to you when you leave." That's not right. Okay? And then, but what got this lady to remove her son from there was, "But if you really feel like you have to use, and you just have to do it, please do it in the designated using area." Now, they told her that. Of course, she took her son, and he felt safer sleeping on the ground outside of the women's shelter than he did staying there. You know, and you just, it's, I live in the neighborhood. I'm, I'm like two blocks from there, and, you know, personally, I didn't hear anything about this. Now, maybe I'm, because I didn't have the paper at that time, or, I don't know, I didn't know nothing about it until it was almost ready to open. Because if you'd asked the neighborhood, I'm pretty sure we would have told you that we don't want them there.
Nope.
You know?
And they did.
And they sleep at the edge of my yard. My dog walked up with a needle in her mouth, you know, and, and Todd knows where we live. He used to be in our neighbor. And it's just, there's a lot of old people around that area, and we don't need this. I'm not very nice to them. I chase them off, but, you know, some people just, "Well, we won't let our kids outside now." Hello? You know, that's our neighborhood. And we should have been at least informed that this was possibly going to happen. So that, as far as I'm concerned, they just got to go. We stopped having our AA meetings there, because they, you know, once we seen the out of, you know, "Do not enter," I thought, "Well, I don't want to spend my Friday nights down here being afraid in the basement of this place." So, anyway, that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hendrickson. Welcome back.
Chuck Hendrickson, Executive Director of Love Overwhelming, 304 Calhoun Way. Also a South Kelso resident, 121 Olive Street in Kelso. Happy Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you.
Um, just wanted to come give an update, uh, some changes that we've had. You know, we keep coming, running into community members, community groups that have some misinformation, or, or past information. We've been very open about who we serve, as you heard read, that, you know, we, we serve registered sex offenders. But due to the influx of families, uh, we, we can't serve sex offenders at our facility anymore. That is something that we've, we've been working really diligently with, with that. We've been...
Let's, let's keep it that we're not going to yell at each other here, guys. Keep it civil.
Uh, we've been working, we've sought out assistance from Sheriff Mark Nelson, as well as offender services, uh, staff. So we, we've been working with them for the past couple of months on how to alleviate anybody coming in that is a registered sex offender. So I'd like to, uh, this is a guest guide that we have. This is, uh, one of the changes that we've made, and I just want to point out a couple of things within that that we have done. On the first page, it says, "Guest Guide." On the very bottom, it says, "When would staff have to ask someone to leave?" Uh, I obviously don't have enough time to go over all of this. But, uh, we do, and, and have, and continue to ask someone to leave if he or she is using drugs, including marijuana or alcohol on the premises, becoming violent with another guest, or disturbing the peaceful enjoyment of our facility. All guests are required to read and sign guest obligations, a good neighborhood policy, before accepting our services and before being able to come in. And so that was a change right off the bat. We were, like I said, we were very open about our services. We were not set up for families. We did not expect that influx of those kids coming in, nor would I ever want to put anybody in danger by setting that up. And so we had to be in contact and communication with the county to be able to make these changes, and we are continuing those conversations to be able to see what best practices that we can adopt within our contract to be able to change some stuff for the safety and health of not only the community, but in our shelter. On the backside, you guys would like to look at that? There's, uh, number nine there. It's, uh, "What rules do I need to know about?" Uh, this is one I want to point out. Registered sex offenders are not allowed in the facility at this time. They need to report to staff if you are an RSO, so appropriate service arrangements can be made. Just yesterday, we had this. We have a list now with, with offenders that we have identified with help with the county, uh, help with the offender watch on, online with the pictures. And, and my staff know with that, when they come in and they do sign in, that you need to be able to meet with our program coordinator to make a safety plan so that we make sure that everybody is safe with that. So those are some of the changes that, that we have made. We still have our outreach. Um, there's a, a real interesting thought that people think that we can police people from public areas and take away their rights from being in that public area, and that is not what we do. We actually do outreach and engagement, where we go in there and we engage with those individuals to get them out of where they are, to get them into our services.
Three minutes.
And so, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. All right. That's all the slips I have for tonight. If there's anybody else here to address the council, we take a couple more minutes. Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Just give us your name and address for the record, so I don't have to interrupt you and slow your roll once you're gone.
My name is Anna Hooper. My address is 1408 Beaumont Avenue in Kelso. I just wanted to, okay, I work at the Chevron on Allen Street, and since Love Overwhelming has opened, I've been assaulted twice by residents of Love Overwhelming. We are constantly having to kick people out from the shelter, stealing, and I know they're from the shelter because one gal came back in and said, I said, "You're not allowed in here," and she said, um, what'd she tell me? She said, "There's a baby crying at the shelter." I don't care. You're not going to come in here and steal and think you get to come back in.
You're not a satellite of the shelter down there, right?
And, you know, so, I mean, we're fine, yeah. Constantly having to tell people to leave, they're loitering, they're, we've caught a couple of people selling dope outside. I mean, it's just an, the influx and the time away from my job, because I have to watch these individuals when they come in. And I'm not saying that they're all from Love Overwhelming, because we, you know, obviously have some that are local, but since it went in, yeah, like I said, I've been assaulted twice.
Okay.
Um, that right there, to me, enough said.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just ridiculous, so...
I'm sorry for that. All right. Anybody else address the council tonight? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
My name's Emily Ripperger, and I live at 2420 South Silver Lake Road, Castle Rock. Um, I'm a high schooler at Total Lake High School. I'm 17, getting ready to graduate soon. Um, I have a lot of friends, which are not good choice friends, um, that do drugs in and out of juvie. They always come back talking about how juvie was fun and this and that. I have a little brother, which my parents have already talked about, that wasn't making good choices. Have a sister right now that's in need of help and stuff like that. Real mother is actually, um, in prison, drugs. So, um, my aunt, who I've known since I was three years old, is taking care of me, has been for 17 years, which I'm very grateful for. But I live in California, so, you know, cities, you don't really get to see all these people doing drugs and stuff. And when I come here at the age of 13, I thought, hey, you know, Longview's kind of cool. And then when I look around and see everybody doing drugs, and watching people get high and walking around the streets, loopy, and kids doing it that I know and I care about, and being around that, that's not a life that I really thought I'd ever grow up in. Not, I'm not saying that my mom put me in a bad place at all, but I have family here, so that's, that's one good thing. But walking around and seeing people do that, and know that there's kids out there that get to live a life like that, that is, that's upsetting. My mom taught me to help people and don't, I mean, don't judge, but when you see that, you kind of can't help yourself to judge. I don't, I'm 17. I know I have so much of future. I want to be in the military. I'd like to be a lawyer.
Good job.
So I'm making myself good choices, but when I see other kids doing that, I try to help them, but when they turn around and they still do that, it, it's sad. And to know that there's actually adults that can change their life around and fix that, like, why wouldn't, how come they won't do it? Which I know it's hard, but I don't want to have to go around that and no kids, and watch kids grow up around that kind of life, when some, when people, there are certain people in this world and in this state that can change it. Or even for the next coming kids, who are the next generation for Washington State or Kelso. So why not we make a change? I was taught that, and I'm learning it still.
Point.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your graduation. All right. I think we have time for one more. Anybody else? All right, we will move on. Thank you for coming out here, guys. I know it's not easy.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If, if you don't mind, if I could just have just a couple of minutes to maybe wrap up what I've heard.
I'd be glad to give you that.
And maybe what we can do. I think what's been pretty well stated by, um, staff here is that they are a legal non-conforming use, so in terms of...
Hold on, just a second. Sorry to slow your roll. This is our attorney, Ms. Parker. Sorry.
There you go. So from a land use perspective, the, the use that's in that place is, is the same land use that was in there prior. And while we did change the zoning to try to add some permitting so that when future uses came in, um, we could address some of these impacts, this application came in before those rules were in effect. And so because of the, so the way the law operates is you then have a legal non-conforming use that's allowed to continue so long as it's the same land use. Um, but what I heard here was a lot of talk, not about necessarily the land use, but about the impacts from the population that is served, because the population is slightly different. And, um, those impacts are causing some impacts to the neighborhood.
Sure.
And, and what I heard was that perhaps we could work with the county. I heard a discussion with the landlord, um, the, the property owners, or the owner of the Love Overwhelming seems to be open to trying whatever things can work. So what I think the city can do, if that's the direction of council, is to, um, talk to the county, find out what the requirements are under the grant money, and what kinds of things we can do to try to improve the impacts. Also, work with the landlord, maybe, or, um, work with the Love Overwhelming and maybe talk to the landlord, see if we can have, put some strategies in place to improve it. But in terms of making them leave that location right now, that is not a legally viable option absent some sort of condemnation that would, that would buy out that interest. And that's, that's often very costly legally and very expensive practically.
And we'd have to have a reason for that, too.
Exactly. So, um, that's what I think I heard and what I think we can offer as a way to try to address some of the impacts, but, but not the land use specifically.
And several of the action steps that you mentioned there are underway already. I mean, we, we don't always get into everything that we're working on to, to try and deal with the things to make this place better, but of the things that Ms. Parker mentioned, talking to the county, having some dialogue with the property owner, having some dialogue with the, with Mr. Hendrickson and, and the operations there. Those things are, are going on right now.
Several questions from the police department, where we're trying to figure out what authority we do have and what we can and can't do to be able to address as much as we can in terms of a regulatory, the, the activities, the impacts we're trying to, to minimize.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Redd, any...
Yeah, I just, I think the big problem was that Love Overwhelming came in before we had any parameters set, and they knew that. So obviously, we didn't get a vote on it. They said they want to be good neighbors, and the neighborhood has gone downhill. I live up there. And so I, they say they want to be good neighbors, but then they wanted to, to just shove us down our throat without, before we could have anything set. And so I disagree when they say they want to be good neighbors on that part, and the neighborhood's gone downhill. It's worse. It's a lot worse. And so I've been up there 18 years. It stinks, so... And I've been quiet because I knew we couldn't do anything. If I would have got the vote, I would have said no. So...
All right. Thank you. All right. Continuing. Counsel, next item of business. We have a, uh, decision on a consultant for feasibility study contract there for your approval. What would you like to do there? Sorry. Let you find it.
Move to approve. Snacking.
All right. It's moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute this contract with DEA Inc. for a feasibility study at Anchor Point. Uh, so we hope to maybe have some industrial development south of town. Discussion, counsel. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you. So Steve, the C E R B planning, the planning grant?
Yes. Curb?
What, Curb, what exactly is it in, in it for their interests? Why are they willing to put up half the amount needed to complete the study?
So the Community Economic Revitalization Board is authorized by the state legislature to fund infrastructure and planning for local communities, cities, counties, ports, in order to plan for and, and support new jobs, especially in the area, in the areas of industrial development. So part of their annual allocations goes towards feasibility studies just like these, and so the city applied for one of these planning grant applications, I'm sorry, one of these planning grants. We presented with, I believe, four other entities that, back in March, all doing a similar type of feasibility study. So this is something on an annual basis that the state funds. So the, the incentive for the state is increased industrial activity, increased jobs will convert into more economic growth and tax revenue for the state, as well as for vitality of the communities that those jobs are located in.
One other thing, most grants come with a, sort of call strings attached, things that you have to enforce when taking the money. What exactly is involved there?
Well, we have not yet received the final agreement with the Curb Board. That will come following the actions that take place tonight. There were several pre-contract requirements. One was to secure the services of a consultant. Another was to have your scope of services defined, make sure that within that scope, the work that the consultant is going to complete will meet the criteria, and there's some significant criteria about certain statistics and economic analysis that has to be conducted, that, you know, this is for every type of planning application that comes forward. So, and then also to show that money has been secured for the local match. And so we do have that. The city has put forward $20,000 that's been authorized. We have a memorandum of understanding where $5,000 will come from the county, and then we have another $25,000 that will come from the private owners of the property, which is the Winters family, and so they're party to the memorandum of understanding as well. So we'll have the signatures there by, before the close of this week, and then we should see the contract agreement come back to us from Curb within probably the next month and, but we'll be able to get reimbursed for that portion that they've agreed to.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Myers?
Yes, um, thank you. I, I think this piece of property has some real potential for the city to, to create economic viability. This kind of a study is a necessary first step in, in going forward and looking at it, so I really am happy to see this take place.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree with that. I love the CSP interactive moments, and this, and we're looking for something to develop and this, I don't think that's going to have a lifespan, but we had something interactive where it flushes out what's available and what to be done, and I wish we'd done it.
Another point to make, one of the purposes of having this type of feasibility study completed is that it also opens up opportunities for future funding from the state, especially through the Curb Board, because not only do they fund planning grants, they also fund infrastructure, as well as the U.S. Economic Development Administration. So this, this gets us ready to get in line for other funding opportunities that, that are available for these types of projects.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Franklin, yeah?
Yeah, one other thing, Mr. Taylor. So let's say that the feasibility says that it's ready to be built, you got the plans up, somebody's going to come in and actually do the building, and it'll be, I don't know, let's just say a logging company for the heck of it, or a paper mill. They come in and build a paper mill on it. They, the private, the people that own the land right now would sell it or lease it to those people, correct?
Yes, that's most likely what would happen.
Be done. Is it in our contract? I, I read through this, I didn't see it in there, but is it in our contract that they reimburse our $20,000 that if this feasibility study does prove to be prosperous, especially for them, and, but are we going to get the taxpayers' money back?
I, I believe the, the concept would be that we would see a significant return on the investment of the $20,000 by the increased capital investment that could occur and, you know, let's say the hundreds of millions of dollars, or, and then sales tax activity, utility taxes, you know, property tax, valuation increases. So we, we would see those, we'd reap those dividends from successful development that would occur out there.
And if the study says that they're, that it's not able to be built upon, then we are just out that $20,000?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion, counsel? Not hearing any. The motion is to authorize the city manager to enter into this professional services agreement for the feasibility study at Anchor Point. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed?
No.
I have one no, six ayes. The ayes have it, and that motion is passed. Agreement, the signature is approved. Next, annual contract for consultant design services and our water sewer replacement program. Counsel, what would you like to do there?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement for the contract with Wallace Engineering.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute this professional service contract, Wallace Engineering, to help design our water sewer replacement program. Discussion, counsel. Mr. Archer?
Thank you. Uh, as Mr. Taylor, is this going to include the replacement of the minor road, the reservoir?
No, this is, this is actually just limited to replacing a few hundred feet of water main that's undersized in the Jones Road area and an additional segment of sewer in the 12th Avenue area that is most troublesome. This is just part of our, of an annual program that we try to, to spend 150 on water and about 400 on sewer. I think we will be looking to go to add on the minor road replacement services probably a little bit later this summer. So this is a separate, separate piece of work.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? I'm not hearing anything. The motion is to authorize the manager to enter into this services agreement with Wallace Engineering. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? I hear none. The ayes have it. The manager's authorized to enter into that agreement. All right, next, home project allocations. We talked about this a little bit at our last meeting. Let's nail it down some. Who's taking the lead there? Mr. Taylor, is that you?
Yes, sir. We had a public hearing regarding the home dollars that are available for 2015. You'll remember that we had two projects come forward. One was from, it was affordable rental for a four-bedroom rental on the former Terry Salvage property that would be built by the Lower Columbia Community Action Council, and their request was for $46,335. We had another application, Foundation for the Challenge of Kelso, and that would develop one group home for four developmentally disabled residents. It's sponsored through Life Works, and that request is for $46,718. The actual amount that is available for 2015, because we see a continuing decrease in funds from these HUD programs, it was estimated earlier to be in the $46,000 range, it's going to actually be in the $40,000 range, so we have $39,000 actually is what's available. So counsel was given these applications at the, prior to the last meeting, and it was decided to bring it back to this meeting to have continued discussion on whether to fund one of the applications, both of the applications partially, or none of the applications.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. Counsel, let's talk about what you'd like to do. Is there, you want to discuss first, or are you going to make a motion?
I, I move that we just carry the money over to next year.
Okay, fund neither.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to, to carry the home funding we have over till next year and look for different projects. Discussion on that motion, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, I, I think you mentioned that we set goals, we set goals for the money, and neither of these projects set the goals. And we can't fund them fully anyway, so I think we carry it over, we'd have more money next year to fund the projects that we, we set goals for.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I was just wanting to find out what the consequences would be of trying to do this. Does that diminish future allocations or anything from H U D?
I, I don't think by holding the monies over for one year that it would, you know, jeopardize any, any future monies, or if we would be scolded for not using the $40,000 for one year. One point to bring forward is that the city did, and I'm not speaking on behalf of one application or the other, but there was a request to carry over funds from CAPS allocation from two years ago, wanting to carry that over to then be used with money if they were successful in their application request for this year's fund, that they combined those two years of allocations together, which would build, get something started on the Terry Salvage property. And if you remember the Terry Salvage cleanup, we had an integrated planning grant process that did your planning for the toxic cleanup, as well as future use of that property, and then we ultimately got a remedial action grant from the Department of Ecology and a Bronfields grant from EPA to remediate the property. Subsequent to that, the city, the council did approve the transfer of the land to CAP for the construction of housing there. So there's some history that's involved there, and I do believe CAP is wanting to, they can't do the entire project of what they had originally hoped for with the cottage housing, but they wanted to get a start in, in providing some housing there.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I would just, my own personal feelings on this, I think we should turn down this current motion and, and then move forward to open it up for, for one of the options. And I think my, I'm leaning towards the community action one, at the Terry Salvage area, so.
Okay.
That's my recommendation to my fellow councilmen, is vote this one down.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Archer?
Yeah, thanks. I would like to see homeownership, not rentals, in that area, like we originally had planned. So I'm, I'm in favor of delaying it for a year to see if we can't come up with some kind of home ownership, where we can give people the pride and ownership instead of a bunch of rentals, a bunch of more rentals being put over there. We don't need any more rentals in this town. We need some homeowners that'll be taxpayers, and they'll live in this community, and they'll, and their kids will go to school in this community, and they'll stay in this community. That's just the way I feel.
Great, thank you. Mr. Roberson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with Dan. Let's put something on the ground. This is, I'm in favor of the Terry Taylor because we renovated that land to get it back in use. This four-bedroom would be something that would help a large family with rental assistance, lower rent. I can see a larger family having a bigger need. Some of us raise large families and know that a large rent is, takes away from a lot of food on the table, and I think, we had a report card once that talked about a lot of families that reduce what they eat so they can put food on the table for their kids. So if this, and, we did have one point that I'd, I'd heard about was that, the question is, is would this be the only one in that Terry Salvage area? And I think it's plotted out, so there, eventually could be another one next year and the next year. And somewhere down the road, where we had done the, talking about ownership, I guess we got to figure out, how are we going to do that? How are we going to make homeowners? It, it's just we'd have $46,000, here, go buy homes. What, what's the tools we're going to use to do it, guys? That's what we need to do.
Yep.
So I'm going to, I'm going to be against the motion to carry it over. Let's, let's make use of it and make our community better.
Thank you, Mr. Roberson. Uh, Mr. Schimmel?
I'm in support of the motion to hold it over. I, I feel there's probably some better opportunities in the future, and if this is accumulated with what we're able to distribute next year, it'll be a bigger pot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Franklin?
Thank you. Did we use the monies allocated for HUD last year?
Um, yes, I believe that was Foundation for the Challenge used that in 2014, but the 2013 monies were not used. That had been awarded to CAP.
Okay. I'm, I'm with Rick here. I think that, that we need to get something done rather than holding on to the money for, I don't, I don't know what reason other than having more money, like you said, next year to, to put towards this, but CAP's been working hard on this project. They, they've got the land, they, it's all been cleaned, it's ready to go. I, I read their report here, it's very extensive on their timeline and everything else. I think that we give them the money and let them complete the project.
And if I can clarify from the other questions, Mr. Cartis, there, so there are two parcels that are there, and from your understanding, as, when we conveyed the property to CAP, right now, are there only plans to have two different residences on the property, or is the next phase going to be more of a multifamily?
As my, I understand that the current proposal would be to, Foundation for the Challenge, I believe, to put, to build a duplex for, you know, semi-supervised living of, of developmentally disabled patrons, and CAP was looking to do a, a single-family residence on the smaller piece.
Okay.
But not, they're not prepared to do it at this time.
Well, I'll take a turn. I, I think when we, when we did this last time, last week, we talked about, I had mentioned specifically that it seemed like we put a lot of time and effort into coming up with our plans for what we want to see around here, and then we get projects that, that aren't addressing what we say, state that our goals are to be. Nothing against the CAP, nothing against the folks who wanted to put the development of delayed housing in there. I think we funded each of those over and over again, over the years, and I don't have any problem with that. But when we sit down and we take an afternoon and, and come up with what's important to us, and we go through that process and say, you know, we want to encourage more homeownership, we want to encourage revitalization of currently existing homes, I, I think we should be slow to jump off of that plan, just because we have two presentations here that, that do something else. While it's, it's certainly valid to try and address the, the affordable rental need in the community, and I don't deny that there is one, that's just not what we decided to prioritize. I think each of you got a copy of the letter from, from CAP after our last discussion that talked about the, their proposal and how they felt it met the needs, and he emphasized repeatedly the needs for Kelso. It did not at all address the plan that we came up with. So while there are some needs, and it would address those needs, it's not what we decided we wanted to do. And it's not like we would just let this money sit and rot should we not go on with it tonight. There, there have been programs that, that addressed the issues that we came up with as being priorities. I've seen them out there in, in North Kelso. I know a few years ago, there was a, there was a program that helped a homeowner acquire and redo an existing home. That led into surrounding homeowners taking more pride in ownership in their, in their properties and making improvements to those properties that were very evident when we came in to look at the one, you know, through the open house for the one that, that we'd helped directly. And so you'd see a ripple effect there, and we, we developed a homeowner there that we feel like is an important thing for us to do. In our planning, we said we'd like to increase the percentage of homeowners in our community. I, so I, I just am slow to want to jump off of that, that approach toward using our funding, and I think if we can hold this money over and, and put it with another chunk, it's not that we're just going to give somebody $40,000 to go buy a house. It's, well, it may be, frankly, it depends what we come up with, but it'll be a supervised program put on by somebody who makes sure that it's being run well, and it will accomplish the goals that we need to. I think we just need to wait for somebody to, to really take seriously what we say our plans are and come up with a program that, that fits within that. And until we have that, I'm fine with just hanging on the money and saying, saying, bring us, bring us what we're looking for. All right, that's everybody. All right, that's everybody wants. Anybody care to speak again? I don't see anybody. So the motion is to, to just set aside the funding for 2015, hold that over until 2016, and look at awarding it at that point. Those in favor of that motion, let's do, raise your hands, because I know it's going to be kind of close, so let's be real clear. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And those opposed. All right, I got four on this side, and three on that side. The motion passes, and that funding is set aside till next year. Moving forward. First, first thing we have is a second reading of an ordinance that would amend our code relating to marijuana land use. Tracy, by title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Kelso, Washington, amending Kelso Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point forty-five, marijuana-related land uses, to remove restrictions to allow marijuana production and processing facilities to locate within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of residential uses.
Counsel, what would you like to do?
Move to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Moved in second to approve this ordinance on second reading. It would remove the setback requirement from marijuana processing facilities, currently two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback required from residential properties. As we've looked at it, there are really few residential properties that even come close to the few places that we've allowed for marijuana production. One of them that, that is affected by that setback is, is naturally separated from the residential areas by a street and other margins there, so. This would remove that setback and allow them to become a processor or grower in that facility. Or any others that are similarly situated. Discussion, counsel. Mr. Archer.
Yeah, thanks. I've got one question. Now, the two-hundred-and-fifty feet, does it start at the property line, or where the actual grow starts?
It's the property line to the property line of the parcels.
Okay, so if it's two-hundred-and-fifty, or two-hundred-and-sixty feet, that's okay? I mean, if it's two-hundred-and-sixty feet away, it stops, it starts and stops at the property line, right? Not the building?
That is correct.
All right.
Yeah, the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, which, so you could have, let's say you could have a large parking lot separating the building from the, from the residence, or from the edge of the street, and then you have the residential zone, and maybe it's an acre lot, and the residential structure is on the back end of that acre lot, so maybe you have, you know, five-hundred feet separating, but the parcels are basically separated by a road. So, but the way that it's measured, it's, it's a parcel-to-parcel measurement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Other discussion, counsel? I'm not seeing any. The motion is to approve this ordinance on second reading. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 And those opposed. I hear none. The motion passes, all approved. Seven point two, second reading of an ordinance, amending land use definitions for wineries, microwineries. Tracy.
An ordinance of the City of Kelso, amending the Kelso Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point fifteen, related to the microbreweries and microwineries, to expand the zones where such uses are allowed.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve. Second.
It's moved in second to approve this ordinance on, on second reading. Just kind of says, "Microwineries are like microbreweries," and probably have similar impacts, and goes ahead and allows those where microbreweries are allowed. Discussion, counsel. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion to approve this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. I hear none. Motion passes, and the ordinance is approved. Manager report, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm pleased to report that the final piece of the funding for the West Main streetscape, revitalization streetscape improvements, that will add a series of pedestrian-oriented amenities and the repavement of West Main between Third Avenue and Collet's Way. The total project is about a little over a million dollars. The last piece of funding was requested from the county through their rural public facilities grant program, and that request was for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it was approved by the county commissioners today. So we match that with monies from our transportation benefit district, a grant from, a forthcoming grant from the regional, our metropolitan planning organization for STP funds, that's federal-funded. And then we also have money from our CDBG program income funds that we've been holding on to for quite a few years, as we've seen the repayment of various housing rehabilitation loans since the late nineteen eighties. Am I missing any pieces of funding? Oh, Mr. Carter's left me.
He said no.
So again, we're, we're very pleased with the decision by the commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry, the last piece of funding was their prior funding through the same grant program of a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars that was provided last year. So we're undergoing the design of that program, of that project right now. We look to have that designed and the outreach for West Main businesses completed here by the end of the year, and we'll be going to bid in December. And by June of next year, we should see the improvements complete.
Sounds good.
Also wanted to announce that we will be hosting our sister-city delegation from Makinoharu, Japan. This will be on May twenty-eighth, here at council chambers, at four P.M., so we invite you to attend. And we also have our Shoreline Master Program Regulations, since this has been in development for about three years now. We have a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on May the twelfth. All the documents that will be heard and ready, available for public comment, they are on our website right now, and we'll be receiving comments through the public hearing process all the way until council adoption. However, once council adopts, we still have to wait for ecology's approval, and so we don't foresee significant challenges there, but in this case, the buck doesn't stop with the council, it stops with ecology, and we assume we'll have approval towards the end of the year. And that's what I have. Mr. Bryan, do you have any comments regarding the audit?
Thank you. Counselor Bode. We're in week four of our audit. The first week was the federal portion of that. We've got, got a clean opinion on that, and that was, they audited the federal grant money that we received for the West Main realignment. Currently, they're auditing the financial statements of the city, as well as the accountability portion. It's where they look at the, make sure that, they look at various aspects of state laws, city laws, city ordinances, contracts that we have, and make sure that we're following all the rules that have been set before us. So hopefully, they'll be gone in a couple of weeks, anyway. So it's been real busy. Welcome back, Tracy.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel, you had a question?
It's, I just, I don't know if this is the right place, but the love overwhelming, these type of things, is this something that we can have them do, or work with the county to put these barriers in place, or is it? I don't, I guess I'm asking you, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Parker, I don't, because I just think it's something we need to do to work with the county. I mean, obviously, we have an issue that we need to work through, so I just...
Again, I, you know, council consensus, you can provide us with direction to prepare a letter, and, and we can vocalize, from the city council's perspective, what we're hearing from our citizens, and perhaps request that the county provide additional oversight of, of the program to address some of the impacts that we're hearing from our citizens.
Okay.
That's a way to start.
Well, I've personally met with Commissioner Karnofsky. I mean, they're open, but I just, I don't know, as a council, if we want to meet with them, or what, or draft a letter to at least have a workshop or something. I mean, we're, we're dealing with some issues that we had no control over.
Right.
But we're the ones taking all the heat, because they think that we put it in there, that we voted it in, yeah, welcome, and so...
Somehow, it feels good that it's in their parking lot, though, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, I think it's, yeah. So, and they want to work with us, too, so, but I just don't know about the rest of the council members.
Mr. Roberson, you had something to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support what Todd was saying. I, I thought when the report was going to come around, I mean, I was going to recommend that we take some of the steps that Janine has spoken about, and...
There you go, you're first. Counsel reports, Mr. Roberson.
Well, I would recommend that we take, follow the lead of what Janine has added, and Mr. Taylor's added, that we, we should take some steps. If it's impacting our community, we, we need to take some steps and let the county know that they're just not throwing this money down, and we're getting the, getting the wrong end of it, our citizens are. We, we can't have people urinating and defecating, and some of the stuff we had tonight, we've got to make sure that steps are in place, that people are protected. I, I, I know there are people there that, that need help, and I want, I'm all for them getting help, but the whole community doesn't need to be the target because of it. And also, this mic mute button here does not work. I want to let you know that that wasn't me, it was a prior user here. Electrical experience, I've been treating it pretty lovingly.
Stupid rotating things.
You never, you never beat on buttons, because when you're working, you got to replace them.
There you go.
And I'm off to Kansas, to see my oldest granddaughter graduate. I don't know how she got old, and I stayed the same.
Yes.
It's, it's a mystery.
Magic.
So, but I got, we got the SKNA is meeting, the six o'clock Thursday night. I'll probably not be there.
Kansas.
As a part of this trip, Kansas. So if anybody wants to get there and attend and listen to what these guys are doing, they've got a pretty good agenda, they've got some great ideas to go on in the community. If you want to be something positive for South Kelso, get there and get involved and see what they're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying that I'm glad that we do have Andy Hamilton as a chief. I definitely appreciate his and our officers' work here in Kelso, especially, well, I feel secure with him in place, and hope that none of these statistics come to our city. I would just like to add, since it is the Police Week coming up, a few facts about our law enforcement here in the country. Between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eleven, two thousand one hundred and fifty-one white people were shot and killed by police officers, along with one thousand one hundred and thirty black, black people. In two thousand and twelve, five hundred and ninety-nine people were shot and killed. Two thousand and thirteen, three hundred and thirty-two. Two thousand and fourteen, six hundred and twenty-two. In two thousand and fifteen alone, a hundred and sixty-seven have been killed, four of which have happened just in the last five days of this month. So I would just like to say that my heart and prayers go out to both the fallen officers and those that have fallen by officers. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, as a point of order, I was wondering if it would be appropriate, or advisable, to make a motion to move on, to get with the county commissioners, to, to have an official stand as how the council...
I, so I guess what I would advise is that if we can gather some information together, some information from our police department, contact Calletts Two Fire and Rescue to find out, you know, the number of calls and, and how it's impacting their capacity, and if we could draft, draft a letter that we could bring forward to council and, and have, receive council's input and approval, and send that to the county. That might be a good place to start.
That seems like a good approach, yeah.
And...
I'm in favor of that.
And from that point, if we'd like to request perhaps some type of joint workshop with the, with the county commissioners, or if a delegation of council members would like to go to county commissioner meeting to have a discussion, I mean, these, these are all options that, that we could move on.
Okay. Other than that, no report.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, as I mentioned, I think that most of the things that, that Ms. Parker mentioned, we have been doing. I know I've talked to, Todd mentioned he talked to Mr. Karnofsky, I know I have, I've asked for copies of their contracts and shared those over here, and so, yeah, we're, we're not just sitting here saying, oh, that's no big deal. And so, and I guarantee you, that's not the approach that the police department's been taking either. So, yeah, I think, I think we're working on it. I don't know if it helps to have an official position on something over which we have no control, but I, in the past, have not been in favor of taking those personally, just like over mining at Mount St. Helens or something like that. It's just like, okay, if it's mine, I'll take a position, if it's not, I'll just try and, you know, work personally to, to help things happen. Anyway, I also want to follow up on what Mr. Taylor mentioned about the folks coming from Japan. If, you know, as many of you guys could make it, I think that would be great. They are, I mean, these guys are, there's nine people coming all the way from frigging Japan just to see Kelso, because we say where their sister city. And, you know, I'd, I'd hate for them to come and be like, nobody showed up, you know, so. And I don't think that's what's going to happen, but I, I know that it's going to be interesting just to expose ourselves to that culture, and I'm looking forward to learning from them. So I encourage you all to show up, what did he say, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, yes.
Twenty-eight.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Free cake. And to you, Mr. Archer, there wasn't been any suggestion that you wanted the free cake.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out for the flea market we had. Don't know the results yet, but there was a lot of people there. People were spending money, and people were haggling, and it was like good old Flash and Flea Market. It looked like everybody was having a good time, regardless of what happened. I'll find out the official results, and I'll come back with you.
Okay.
As far as the other thing we were going, I talked to Commissioner Gardner. He's willing to sit down and talk. I haven't got to the other two yet. The, these, we have to address these some way, we just can't let them go. If we can work, work it out, fine, if we can't, we have to go another way. But there's too many people mad, and they're feeling unsafe in their own houses now in certain parts of this town, and that's not going to help bring in businesses or anything else. So I would be in favor of drafting some kind of letter and, and giving it to the commissioners, and letting the people know that we are trying to address their concerns, even though we may be legally bound by certain rules and regulations, we have to let them know that we do care about our community. And I think we can straighten this out, but we have to do it before it gets much worse, because summer's coming on, and there's a lot of people here that don't belong in this town right now. And we need to help the people that are here, not the people from Seattle or Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Schimmel?
I just want to mention, I do support the same, you know, as far as trying to encourage the commissioners to do something about the money that they're putting towards all this. And even though I support the base mission of what love overwhelming is trying to accomplish, they're very overwhelmed, and I don't know if they have their structure to be able to meet all those needs. And so I think there's going to have to be a change in how that's dealt with.
Yeah. All right, then, if there is nothing else on the agenda, we'll go ahead and be adjourned. Thank you, guys.